Hello, thank you everyone for attending for this executive session for the Town of Hollywood Park City Council. We're gonna break into executive session at this time it's five thirty-three. And council members present are Scott Bailey, Delane Hall, Oscar B Real and Michael Howe. And we're gonna convene in closed session as authorized by section five fifty-one point zero one seven two of the Texas Government Code to consult with its attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act specifically the provisions of fire protection services outside of the city limits and new digital billboards.
It's overwhelming in here, isn't it?
Yes. But this is why one of my friends said she wasn't coming because they were gonna have the executive session first and she didn't know how long it would last.
Oh, you know, when I sat in those things, it could be anything from ten minutes to two hours.
Yeah, yes.
The...I'd just like to know what that's all about. I wonder if it's regarding this or it's regarding another lawsuit. I get really nervous when I hear lawsuits against the town either because some of them... One of them I was involved in, I think was very frivolous. But because we have insurance, they just up and decided to handle it with the insurance coming. I thought that was pretty sad. But...
So maybe you were so conscious...
Yes.
Didn't bite me.
Yes. I agree.
I think it has to do mostly with...
It does. But it looks to me like they're putting up a...well, now here's something you might not know. This is a new digital billboard they're putting up there. But they're erecting it on our property so we can get the money. Evidently, the city doesn't want it.
Oh.
So that's kinda good, I think. Because that'll be the third sign we have, that'll be the third sign we have and each sign generates a hundred thousand dollars a year. Huh. Interesting. I didn't know that. Oh, wow. They wanna put it in median. Wow. Hey, Kelly.
Hi, guys.
What dragged you in?
Oh, the mayor asked me to come back in.
Really?
Hey, do you want me to hear that? Just in case some questions came up.
Um, about the apartment complex?
I think it's more about the signs.
Okay, alright. I'm gonna fire them off.
Well, I don't know if I got the answer, but...
Alright, the bottom base of the pole that we currently have here is, I'm going to say off the top of my head, between ten to sixteen feet.
Okay.
Alright. The median here, I'm gonna say is a minimum of four feet.
Yeah.
Where...who's gonna, who's going to fix all this?
Don't have any idea.
Yeah, because if I understand it, from here down is Hollywood Park, from here up is San Antonio City.
Exactly.
How are they going to...this is two lane.
So, none of this, I haven't been involved in any of this, so I have no answers on how it's gonna happen.
Well, where is, where is, uh, where's the, this, uh, where is Burke, where's the Burke, Burke, Burke media representative? Is he here today?
I think there's a gentleman out there, so that might be him.
Oh, I'll ask him. Is that you? Would you mind coming over here and sit down? I do have a couple of questions on you.
Absolutely. I am both.
I'm Kelly.
Kelly, nice to meet you.
This is Robert Moore.
Yeah, we met.
Yeah, we met. Did you meet this young lady here?
No.
She's an resident.
Sure.
Okay, so the median here is a minimum of four feet across.
Yeah, five feet.
Okay, alright, I was close. And the base of the, base of the unit of the pole that we currently have in place up here is what? Between ten to sixteen feet wide?
Oh, no, no. The one at Oak Creek is actually five feet wide. The median itself is eight feet wide. So the median that is constructed, I went and measured it all today, is eight feet wide and then that one's about twenty-five feet long. The pole itself is a five foot wide pole and then it's got a six inch stone circumference that goes around it. And then, so that makes it be six feet wide. And there's a foot on each side of that stone base that was created, the veneer that went around it to create an eight foot wide median. So the, then that is a two lane road like at Oak Creek and Sterling Panorama, those are two lane roads. Right there on Voight, that is actually, you have thirty feet right away on the left of your picture there. And then on the right there is actually forty-five feet right away because it widens out there. So where the billboard's going is actually fifty percent wider than where the other billboards are in town because those are just traditional two lane roads. This is actually a three lane right there from where the pole is going toward to anyone. I'm sorry, that one towards sixteen oh four.
So it's not gonna affect this traffic here at all?
Not at all. You know, in our poll, I've talked to my engineers who do the permitting and the blueprints and everything. This is gonna call for a either forty-eight, forty-eight inch or fifty-four inch base pipe and that'll go in the ground. It depends on the overall height. Usually these are on eighty feet tall to reach that interstate and they'll go on the ground about twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet?
Approximately. Again, it's a full flag, you know, sometimes it'll go a little deeper, but all that's totally engineered meets all the obviously buildings, the wind loads and everything. And it'll be very similar to the one that is a thousand, a little over a thousand feet.
Okay.
The Christian one that they have it, I believe it's a, what's Sterling Browning, is up in the street?
Yeah.
Sterling Browning, yeah. Yeah, so we would, we keep the aesthetics the same and then on that situation, we're paying for all that. We'll pay for putting, you know, all the installation, any of the rework to the median and, you know, we'll work with you guys as far as where all that's gonna go. And I've briefly spoken to Chris a little bit about how we do that, but it'll be very similar to what the existing billboard company does and it'll fit in the same footprint.
Well, um, the, I guess I just completely got confused. I thought this was, was San Antonio City property.
It's actually not. It's...
Really?
Yeah, so it's, the only part, right here, this curb where the grass is, that's San Antonio, this property is.
Okay.
This whole street is Hollywood Park.
So, the property line is right about here.
Okay.
And then it comes all the way up to right in here because this is part of Hollywood Park.
Uh, the Valero.
Right. So, comes down and then Hollywood Park's over here. So this is San Antonio. But up and over, and this is part of Hollywood Park.
Interesting.
Yeah, it really is. So like, what we do is I've...
It's not like it's squared off or...
No, yeah, you're right. It's kinda just, I can go behind that building there and... What we do, I've got a little over a hundred billboard around the state and most of mine are the traditional billboards you'd see on a highway and interstate, busy city streets. And what this product really is, is a gateway sign and that's what we're proposing to other cities too. And it's something that you guys already done, obviously, and, you know, it's happened in Windcrest and Castle Hills and downtown.
Sure.
Basically, you know, it's a unique opportunity to where they told the gateway because it's right at the entrance to the city, that's right at the city limits. And also, you know, it's fortunately, it's on city owned property as well to where, you know, there's financial benefit. Because sometimes when it'd be a third party involved, like if I was putting it on the Valero property, I'd have to pay them land rent and they'd have to pay you guys. So it'd be very, it gets a little more complicated, but the fact that you're also a certified city, which is allowed by TechSod. So TechSod is the permitting authority for billboards, but it's a unique situation where you're certified and that eliminates getting, having to throw all the TechSod right there too.
What type of shutdown, uh, two questions here. First question is, what are the dimensions of the sign and then what type of, what type of shutdowns do you anticipate to have in order to have the construction, in order to get the construction moving for that post?
That I'm gonna have to work with the city on and figure out the, obviously, the least congested, do work around that. But, you know, typically on a billboard like this, it's a forty-eight to seventy-two hour install, you know, to do this. And, you know, we're gonna maybe create a detour where one area is shut and then goes around. And that's something we're gonna have to... We've never, we haven't done many of these where we have to shut down streets, you know, we're usually on private property, you know, we've done over a hundred of those. But very similar to what the other companies done at Oak Creek and, you know, the benefits of this one is people are used to median being there. You know, it's just a matter of like that inconvenience for those forty-eight hours to get this thing in the ground. Once it's installed...
You take turnaround time, it's like two to three days?
Yeah, yeah. We get out there and they'll drill the pipe and that takes about three to four hours to drill the pipe.
So you have to shut down both sides of the street or you're able to do it? Okay.
What, 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 hold on here because I'm gonna throw another monkey in the wrench here. What could I do to convince you to do it at night?
You know, that's something I'm open to. And then the company I use, I tell...
Because I, I, I would, I'll stand up there and I'll wave your flag, but during the day, man, I'm telling you, brother.
That street is...
And this man knows more, more than I do, even though I've lived here the longest. But that street is chaotic and for you to even have one lane shut down is going to back up everybody from that stop sign all the way back to the next stop sign?
Well, not just that. It'll back up everything over on Stone Oak, on the other side, all the way back to the hospital. It's gonna back sixteen oh four on Oak Creek.
And they're doing it now, if you've ever gone or looked, observed right now because I'm going for physical therapy because of my knee right now. But if you come out of Voight and you're sitting at the light at sixteen oh four and wanting to go straight across the street down to Stone Oak, they're doing construction work right now. They've got one lane down and it, I won't even go that way anymore. Now I go around and I come around...
One, you know, luckily those, those constructions will last weeks or months, you know. And I, I think, where I think working at night, that's something that I would love to do and that's something that we have done before and the crew I use...
Or maybe on weekends.
Yeah, we could, or even on...
Weekends?
Yeah, a weekend, maybe even a weekend at night. But the crew we use builds billboards all over the country. They're the leading group and they cost, I mean, it's a premium. They're the most expensive company and I only use them and they, they've done these, they've built them in water at bridges and causeways. I mean, they're amazing what they do and they work faster than anybody. Again, you know, I pay more for that, but it's just peace of mind. And I think working at night is, is something that we could definitely do.
Well, there, I mean, if y'all are willing to work at night, that's, that's, that's always been one of my pet peeves.
Yeah.
All the construction around here. You go to El Paso, I lived in El Paso for four years, to El Paso, they don't do any real work, nothing unless it's an emergency. Everything's done at night. When they bid their job, they're busy and you don't get paid extra for working night. You're just expected you're gonna work at night.
Well, it makes sense, yeah.
Less traffic, it's safer, it's cooler.
Yeah.
That's true, that's true.
Safety is going to be our major factor. We have bumper to bumper bumps.
I agree.
With the cell phone users, we're gonna run into problems. And like I said, it's gonna back in Hollywood Park and like you said, it's gonna back into Stone Oak and it's gonna create a nightmare for all of us. So I, I would at least hope you would consider...
No, absolutely, yeah. It's something that...
So you're looking to put one there at Voight?
Uh, yes.
And then you wanna...
Then there's one at Chula Vista, too.
Chula Vista.
Okay. Where is Chula Vista?
Down.
It's my turn in to, to deliver...
It goes by the on place.
Oh, you do?
Right there by the, where we got that, we picked up that...
Get in here and I can't get in there.
Yeah, it's a primo.
Ah, it is a primo place. It's my wife and I on a four bedroom, three bath, one acre model sitting here on Subway. And I've had enough, you know? And we wanna get into something smaller because the kids are gone.
Well, the one at Chula Vista, it, it'd be very similar to Oak Creek and Sterling Browning because it's the same width road. And then there's, when we first turn in there, you know, there's a two business on each side driveway immediately. So we'll have to put the median set back beyond their driveways to where whenever people are turning out of businesses, it'll be totally...
Because it's narrow as it is.
It is the same width as Oak Creek, you know, over there by Holiday Express, they're the same width, they're the same right away and everything. So we'll, we'll build, you know, keep the aesthetic the same of what the billboards are gonna be.
So we're just gonna step back up these...
It would step back beyond, and I think there's a picture in there, you can see where we're putting them down. It's gonna be just past the driveways. So what we're doing there, you see the driveway ends right here? So we put the pole back here in the median and then the sign would flag toward the road.
Is there a median in there now?
There's no median. So it'd be similar to Oak Creek and Sterling Browning where we're gonna create one.
So you're gonna put a median in?
Exactly. And it would be as small as we would need, obviously, we're not trying to take up any more room than we need to. But it would be the same, you know, with it being, you know, one-way traffic each way, you know, it's gonna be any different than over there at Oak Creek. But ideally, you know, if you build a billboard, you wanna put it here in the middle and build it in the center of the sign like that, you know, because it's, it's cheaper. But you know, in this situation, we're gonna have to flag it, you know, get the median set behind the driveways because you don't want people turning into these driveways and having to bob and weave around the median. So the median will set back behind the driveways.
This is the P line.
Exactly.
And so you enter here and you exit over here.
Okay, yeah.
And it's, it's kinda busy, he's, he's got...
You know, I worked there today, he was, he was...
He's got a booming business.
He's jamming over there, you know. And then this center is busy, they have a lot of, I guess, underscore or taquando or something over there.
Well, we're trying to convince them to use this, not use this as an entrance. Trying to get the business to change this from being an entrance to being an exit only because you got a Starbucks here. Everybody comes out and turns here and then, you know, people...
Yeah, I saw that today, yeah.
I mean, I was gonna say, I painted that stripe in there, I almost got run over five or six times while I painted that stripe.
Yeah, you're right.
You got a Starbucks, what?
Oh, no, this on the other one. There's a second location. This is the, it's in the other packet that's stated, um, I don't know if you got...
It's not in his package.
Oh, it's not in... Yeah, and it's...
So where, where we picked up that deer, will you help me put the deer in the truck?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's Chula Vista.
Oh, okay, okay.
Was it dead?
Yeah, earlier this year, he called me, I did deer, I helped him load in the truck.
Okay, hold on, I go, what are our liabilities for these animals that's in our neighborhood but are laying on San Antonio's property? And he goes, I'll be right there, Bob.
They're just curious animal, they don't see what's going on.
We're having a lot of problems with them, you know, getting in here. I get out of my car and I shoot them back in, you know, it doesn't stop.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I came down today from, you know, to hear and answer your questions, council's questions, anybody's questions. I've talked to Chris about it a few times then, you know, and he's obviously been in favor of financial screen, you know. So the, these two deals as they're presented over the term of the contract would be just over four million dollars, you know, and it...
He's really interested in, um, that basically pay for getting the roads completely retopped and keeping them that way.
Well, and this thing is, you guys already have highway frontage and they're already existing billboard, so it's not a huge difference to what you're used to. You know, it's just, yeah, it's really, so I mean, you've kinda got the system in place where it's easy. And the, and the benefit is, like I said, you're a certified city where this is allowed right now. So things can change with TechSod and legislation they have, when they present new house bills and things like that. So that's something why I've been working and really trying to be persistent, you know, and present this is because, you know, we just don't know. This might not even be doable here in nine months or a year, you know, but it may be, who knows? You just don't know. I've seen rules change and, you know, there's so many things that they propose at the state level that changes things. So right now, you know, there's room for these two more and luckily they're both at the entrance. The Chula Vista is the, would be the southernmost billboard in the city. And then on two eighty-one, if you're coming northbound, and then the one on sixteen oh four there at Voight would be the westernmost.
What is, what is your, um, contract, uh, time, um...
For lease.
Very, thank you very much, yeah. What is the, what is the lease?
It's a thirty-year term.
Is it?
And then what we do is we build in guaranteed escalators throughout that, so that, that's...
Which is what I was looking at.
Yeah, and then so that spreadsheet shows, you know, we start out at already what you guys have already accepted from the other company. We're starting out at the max level of that and then we're there and then it increases and then we're also doing the signing bonus that's just free as like a licensing fee, so to speak. That doesn't even get applied to the land rent. So each location will get a signing bonus upfront and then there's land rent will be made annually for both locations. And then they'll both increase over the whole thirty-year term. So and that, that totals up at the end to be roughly four million dollars for, for both of them. And the one on sixteen oh four would be one of the electronic visual billboards on both sides. And then the one on two eighty-one right now, Chris and I were kinda discussing that, he was saying maybe start out with that one being a static, regular, traditional billboard just because they had just converted another one and maybe do that one later down the road or something. And that's kind of the gray area and to see how, you know, everybody feels about that council-wise. But we're open to whatever, we're excited and, you know, we've got billboards ready, we've got crews ready, so like we can move quick. You know, we're in a, in a small company to where we don't have to go through all the channels of, you know, big Fortune five nine company.
If you get the wave of approval, when can you start?
You know, if we get, once we get all the agreements signed, we could have construction begin within sixty days. Like we can go quick. It's sixty days, so it takes about, takes about six to eight weeks to get the digital screens made and then you wanna have to order all the, you know, make sure we have everything obviously buttoned up as far as construction, when we're gonna shut down, you know, getting all that lined up, obviously, and crews for the medians and getting that rebuilt aesthetically and doing all that. But we could definitely begin construction. I'm about to build two new boards in Austin, just north of Austin. I got permits approved on December thirteenth and I'm building those here in two weeks, so that was about six weeks.
How long before you can offer service to the customer as far as...
And once we begin construction, we go live, you know, right after construction's done because we work with CPS or whoever the power provider is here, you know, in that situation. We line all that up in advance, you know, to where we have, we have power because you wanna have power when you put up a digital screen to calibrate and make sure everything's working correctly. You don't wanna just have the crews leave and turn it on two weeks later, you know. So we, we'll have power there, so once we, once we stick our in the ground real at hole, we can have it, we'll have the digital burning and ads running, you know, within forty-eight, seventy-two hours.
There's so much turnover at that car wash. I don't know if you've ever noticed that. You know, not, not the car wash itself, but the businesses within the car wash. And I think it would be advantageous, you know, for those people there, you know, since they're city. No, those, oh, those are San Antonio, but they'd still have the opportunity.
You know, one thing we do, and I hope I get a chance to say this to the council today, is, you know, we're, like I said, a smaller company. What Clear Channel does is they make you take a two, two board memo whenever you go rent a billboard from them. You have to rent two billboards from them. And then whenever you do one of their digital billboards, because they have such a big network, they make you rent two. And then they also don't offer exclusivity where you could, you know, that's something, so what we do is, we will, you can rent just one board from us, not multiple. So you're not forced into that. We'll do discounts for Hollywood based businesses. We always do discounts to nonprofits and military owned entities. So that's something that, I'm not familiar with what they do. And then we're also giving free advertising to the Town of Hollywood Park as well. So we'll promote, you know, things here in the city, whether it be events, you know, Dump Text and Drive, you know, any of those kind of events like that. We, we're, we're gonna be providing that. Our graphic artists will do the design work, we'll plug that in up there. And that's something that is kind of, I guess you could take a bonus beyond that.
That would be perfect for you. I mean, a big flashy sign up there, please come use our park.
Park closed.
You'd be down there twenty-four seven cleaning that dang thing up.
We'll do maps to parks in San Antonio.
We've talked about that. And I thought you liked that idea.
We've done a lot of that.
Appreciate that. I think I've got my back there.
I've got digital billboards, you know, throughout the state and, you know, we, we donate a lot and, you know, I'm involved with whenever churches, nonprofits come in, you know, we do a lot of donating. We, we help people out, we do discounted rates. So we have a lot of flexibility, you know, being independently owned and then, you know, I'm the owner of the company. So I'm, I'm not just a representative here, I'm the city maker, you know, it's something that... Another thing we do is instead of doing a full spot, making you take two boards and it being a huge financial commitment, it really prices out a lot of smaller businesses. So we say, okay, instead of just doing one spot, if you can't afford that and that's on your budget, how about you show up maybe every other minute on the billboard? Where it's kind of the pro cut the price in half. And we've done that in other markets because we compete with Lamar and our other market firms throughout the state. And they have their rate card, but you don't budge on it and it's, you know, so much more expensive. And we chop the spot up basically and give small businesses an opportunity.
Building, building your, your, your product where customers, it reaches out to all the customers.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I ran a small business for twenty years.
Oh, really? Okay.
I ran a landscape business for twenty years. I started off with seven yards and I sold it and I had over three hundred yards.
Really? Wow, that's amazing.
So, and, but I never could afford to do any serious advertising because it is very expensive.
Especially with the big guys. You look at television, radio, I mean, you certainly have the big billboards in town, they get, it gets cost prohibitive, you know. So we see that as there's a need, you know, to create, how can you make, and the digital product is so cool because you can make ads pop up at different intervals. And, you know, whereas a normal traditional billboard, you know, it kinda is what it is. Yeah, but that's something we've had a lot of success with and it's...
I see that as a very, very, a very good idea for y'all.
Yeah, that's, that's one of my big selling points. I've mentioned it, you know, to...
So you build billboards in our community, how much involvement do you have with the community?
You know, we've, we, our main involvement since we're not, you know, living in the community is really just by providing, you know, a service to the community by, through the message on the sign. You know, we will donating the free space, helping. And a lot of people don't have, like, smaller cities especially, don't have a full-time marketing or graphic artist or something like that. And we provide all that too, so, um...
Well, that was what you do about from, from this aspect and for you guys, you know, to get y'all's name out there for good PR is, you know, we do events here. Um, we do National Night Out, for example.
Okay.
And Tiger Sanitation, we'll come down there and they'll set up a table, everybody come by, does anybody know who they are?
Okay.
You see Tiger Sanitation or walk-ons.
Yeah.
They'll come over or, uh, the Roadhouse... They'll come over, or, um, The Roadhouse, you know, they all get involved with all these things, you know, we do a five K runner.
Okay, cool.
Um, you know, one of the businesses, who Albert Breakfast talked us through, five K runner, something like that, just gets your name into the community, people start knowing who you are, and what you're there doing for.
Yeah.
So I I didn't know if you're interested in doing anything.
Oh, we'd love to do that, and that's something that, you know, being a, you know, my company's a family-owned business, and we like to be involved in, really, we kinda cater to small family-owned businesses and not just huge multinational companies, so anytime we can get involved like that, or or have a part, or help promote it, or do anything, and, you know, be involved, we'd love to do that, you know, it's just, it's good for everybody, it's good for people to face with a name, and, you know, and know good contact, and.
It it really is.
And when I, and actually, whenever I put up these billboards, I, whenever you see the phone number that says advertise here with the phone number, it's it's my cell phone number, you know, they call me, you know, and so, I mean, that's what I like, is I'm I'm dealing firsthand with the business owners and the and the community, you know, so it's, you know, billboards can be a touchy subject, but, you know, I think that if they're done right, and they're done aesthetically right, and if there's a financial benefit to the city, this is really kind of a perfect storm to where it's kind of a win-win for both parties, you know.
Well, not even, not not just done right, if people understand what's going on.
Sure, yeah.
Billboards are gonna be a part of this.
Yeah.
You might as well accept it and and work with it, kinda like when they brought remotes in. It's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's gonna happen, yeah.
Complaining about it ain't gonna make a bit of difference, so if you complain about it, figure out how to make it work.
Well, and have a say in how it how it is done, you know, that's what you, and otherwise, I've seen cities push back, push back, and then what happens is, they go to the neighboring towns and do it anyway, so people are, then they're driving by them on their way home, and
And they look lost out.
Drop their kids off at school, and they lost out on revenue, and how, what size they are, how often they change, you know, things like that, but at least whenever you're involved, and you're the landowner, you're you're really a partner in it, you know, you're able to have a say in it, you know.
What what is your monitoring process on the unit itself, and 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 by this, I mean, uh, what if something should go wrong? Is this all electronically that feeds back to you guys up in Austin, so you have an other, and I've got a sign down, or I've got a light bulb out, or a?
All that, I get an email, I get email, I get phone call, the second something happens on one of these, whether it's a, whether one LED, uh, diode goes out, or a module, you know, or if it's something to where there's a power outage and the whole thing's not turned on, I get an alert, and then also, the company that I buy these from, they have an alert, and they're, they have a twenty-four-seven, uh, monitoring center where they're at, so it's really amazing, I mean, at least with digital, you have, you have monitoring that's built in on on both front and back end, you know, a regular billboard, if a light bulb's burned out, you either have to drive by it, or a client has to tell you, hey, my lights aren't on, you know, but but the digital's amazing, I mean, you get emails, and there's also a live webcam, I can log in and watch it, um, on every one of my digital billboards, I can get on my phone, computer, whatever, and watch them, watch how it's flipping, what it looks like, and then you can also click and look at a diagnostic report, see how everything, if there's any issues, and then as far as being in Austin, we have what three different electrical contractors down here in this area who are.
Can ha- can handle the issue.
That and they're trained to work on these signs, so, cause the manufacturer we use, is there, there's really two manufacturers that everybody uses out of the, you know, Watchfire and Decronics, those are the two best, and whenever you go with one of those two, you're gonna pay a premium for it, but you get that backend service, you get the reliability, and there's a lot less downtime, whenever you buy one of these things from China direct, you can pay thirty cents on the dollar, but you just get a bunch of problems, you know, and, um, these also have, what's really cool is the new technology, it's all shielded, so if you notice on the diagrams, they're all built like a V, that helps orientate the face away from the neighborhood's behind, so i- and what it does too is, there's no there's no light trespass or light pollution on these digital billboards, if you get just past looking head-on, the screen goes black, like whenever you're looking at a computer screen from the side. So it's it's really neat the technology, and then there's also a built-in, a photocell that auto-adjusts, like, it does it every so many milliseconds, that's taking a snapshot of what the ambient light is, if there's a cloud that comes over, it adjusts automatically, and so, I mean, it's a, the technology of where it is now, where where it was a decade ago, is just, I mean, it's like.
Probably where it was last year.
It really is, and the the prices have come down a little bit, but really, now the advances are just in efficiency and technology and less power consumption, and they last longer, you don't have to replace them as often, but.
And and it will run twenty-four-seven?
It does run twenty-four-seven, yeah, and as I, like I said, the built-in auto-dimming and the photocell, so at night, it's actually using, um, you know, about eight to ten percent of the power consumption of what it does during the day, you have it's burn pretty hot to compete with the sun, but at night, you know, it's just like turning a flashlight on in darkroom versus an outside, you know, so they they've really got that dialed in now, it's it's pretty pretty amazing, we put up our first digital billboard in two thousand, um, eight, so we've had our first one up in about ten years, and the advancement, and I've played several up there each year along the way, and each one we buy is just the next best version, it's just like a flash screen, they just got cheaper, better, you know, lighter.
Lighter, yeah.
You don't have to.
They light up there friggin', chingos good.
Uh, oh, for, uh, that the guy put in today? Hey, man, I'll tell ya, I got a meeting with the chief, uh, tomorrow, about the rash of, uh,
Yeah, he's telling me.
B and Es, uh, in our cars, uh, on our streets, so he and I are meeting at ten-thirty in the morning, and I'm gonna get this stuff set, cause I want a light down there, uh, in that, in that dark area, and, uh, they they've been hitting, well, they got us, and then they're hitting everybody around me.
Really?
They break into your car?
Uh, well, I say B and E, but it was actually, it was, uh, I go, Kathy, did you lock your car?
It's just automatic with.
I know, but, you know, my wife comes in, I'm so tired from teaching all day, these kids are driving me nuts, all I wanna do is to stay, you know, and I'm like, okay, all right.
What grade, what grade she teach?
Uh, she teaches fifth grade reading.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right now, Castle Hills Elementary.
Okay.
So, well, that's another thing, I was talking to chief, the other thing, I guess it's on the menu to discuss tonight, is, um, the, uh, fire department's going to start, or take a look at, uh, with the.
So what it, what it is down there is, we've got.
Where is this?
Right in between Hollywood Park and Hill Country Village.
Okay.
There's a little bitty piece of land that's unincorporated Burke County.
That's what he was telling me, he was, cause I talked to him yesterday.
Fire service.
That's amazing.
We're the closest fire department.
Yeah.
So they want to contract with us and pay us for fire service.
Yeah.
Because, so, that's what they're trying to get them to do.
Well, and I ta- I I I talked to him, chief, I guess I talked to him for forty-five minutes yesterday, you know, Q and A, back and forth, who's our backup, how long's it gonna take, because you, you weren't here, but you were here when our firefighting units, uh, went over there off of, uh, what is it, Bitter's Road, and went to the, uh, that business that was over there, because we were, at the time, we were servicing Hill Country Village, and the stores that were back over there off of Bitter's Road caught on fire, and it was almost like a six-alarm fire back out there.
And they had a fire in town, and nobody to get over here.
Yes.
Or had, had only two guys, only two guys were available.
Yeah.
So they couldn't go in, I remember that.
And and and, uh, it it, and, uh, you know, the the, so we get Chavino, we get Bolverde, and we just now, we're, uh, he just told me, this was last year, Castle Hills came in, huh, he came in on this, and I asked him if we had trucks that would reach three stories, and he said, yeah, so I know Castle Hills has one, we have one, I don't know about Bolverde.
Chavino does.
Chavino does also, so we got three snorkels, okay, well, I guess that's good.
So we we've got this mutual assist agreement with all these.
Yeah, but he said it's, he said Castle Hills is, what, fifteen minutes, he said, Chavino would be ten, Bolverde, I guess, is is the, they're they're about fifteen to twenty, twenty out.
Depends on where it's at.
Yeah, that'll be a little bit more easier for them, once, you know, everything gets fixed, uh, up up here, and the traffic's not really that bad, you know, right now.
They do a pretty good job, considering what they're working with there, and I guess they're on access road now, right, going northbound?
Yeah, and 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 right now, during certain times of the day, I wanna say in the mornings and the late afternoons, everything is timed, to rush it, to push everybody through, so.
You know why it's that way?
Why?
Cause text dot actually turned, changed all the times with those lights, so you'd get caught at each light, and they got caught doing it.
Really?
And they got sued.
Oh.
It cost them like seven million dollars.
Ooh.
Yeah, because they wanted to make traffic bad, they were trying to force these toll roads down everybody's throat, they wanna make traffic so bad, people would say, look, just fix it. Back in.
I did not know that.
Back back in eighty-four.
How'd you find that out? Was it in the paper?
No, no, I was involved with one of the, I used to live at Canyon Lake, so I had, this traffic killed me. If I didn't leave my house at six to, six o'clock in the morning, I didn't leave my house till eight, cause I wasn't gonna sit in that damn traffic. I mean, it literally traffic, I would.
So somebody was paying somebody underneath the table to go under the, ooh.
Text dot was wanting, these to be told, so back in eighty-four.
Yeah, but there's somebody at the top of text dot.
Back in eighty-four, the money was allocated to put, um, flyovers on each one of the streets, on every street, all the way up to the county line. Okay, Evans Road, um, TPC Parkway, we're all supposed to have bridges going over two eighty-one, text dot took that money and used it someplace else, and they got caught.
Hmm.
The guy that was in charge of text all the time lost his job because of it. New guy came in, he's getting hammered about, what are we gonna do about these roads, so his fix is, let's make toll roads, so he started, they wanted to start pushing toll roads, and that gal over on the, whatever her name was, created that action committee and fought them, and.
Terry something Road.
Yeah, Terry, she's the one that sued him, she's the one that caught.
She was shot.
She was, and she, and so they, they actually changed the sequencing of the lights to force, so you get caught at every light, that's when traffic was, you know, you get on two eighty-one, and you'd be considered at four-ten.
That's like a record.
Huh?
Yeah.
And she caught them doing it, and sued them and won a judgment against them.
Wow.
And that's when they did this, these turnaround lanes that they made.
Interesting, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause Sue Dee Sardar was one of her big pals on.
Was she?
Yeah, I remember, yeah, cause I was sitting here, I was sitting here listening to it, you know, happened a lot of time, because we were, you know, at the time, we were discussing all this traffic that was, you know, cutting through.
It's horrible.
Here, you know, all the time, you know, which still does, which we still, uh.
You lived in Canyon Lake where you live now?
I live in, over between Chavino Park and Castle Hills.
It's a little bit close, you can almost ride a bike to work.
Except when traffic's bad.
When's Terry one supposed to be all done, and then completed the extension of it?
Two more years?
Well, they get it done, and then they'll start, at the bottom again, they'll start rebuilding it, that's what they do.
Yeah, what they, well, or or what they will do, like they did with the flyovers at four-ten, make them one lane.
Yeah.
And then they'll make them feed into a ridiculous area that has an exit where there just keeps backing everybody.
Every time I go by there, I've been, they ought to take that guy out there, shoot him, and hang him from that bridge, so everybody can throw rocks whenever he runs. I mean, that was the most idiotic thing, extend that road sixty more feet, and you go over that, instead of coming down that.
Go over McCullough.
San Pedro.
San Pedro, yeah, because that's what backs everybody up the whole time.
It's horrible.
Yeah, yeah, and that was more money, they didn't wanna spend it.
Oh, no.
Well.
That's the one thing I gotta say about El Paso, you hit El Paso, Interstate ten, it's five lanes wide going both directions.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, it's, they built that, that city's roads are built for twenty years from now.
Yeah.
San Antonio's roads were built, are built for twenty years ago.
Well, you know, I I, um, I talked to Lyle Larson, I talked to him, not a lot, but I went to his, uh, last, uh, shindig he had over there at the Avon, Avon, or whatever it is, over there at ten and, uh, ten sixteen oh four, this get-together, Kathy and I went over there, and I had a bunch of questions for him, which were primarily questions that I had the last time he had a meeting here, which only four people showed up for, now I've got an office, and I told him, I said, you know, the traffic's getting ridiculous around here, I said, you know, I said, when is the city gonna wake up and get out of this bus business? You know, and, you know, like Houston did, Houston, I mean, they just bit the dust, and got in there and railed a lot of this stuff, so that, so that they could move things, Austin did it, Dallas did it, Fort Worth did it, you know, it's a, it's a movable structure, but the unit just built this horribly ridiculous, ten-million-dollar, uh, uh, bus terminal, so that you could ride a bus from there to God knows where, uh, uh, down there, and he, and he told me, he said, Bob, I'm gonna tell you the truth, he said, until you are stopped dead in your tracks on two eighty-one for one hour, you'll never get that type of of transportation, I was like, wow. I, I, my answer was, are you kidding me? And he goes, no, and, you know, somebody already shut it down, and you know, uh, uh, when we were running out to Beckman, he and I are former railroad guys, I retired from, uh, as a locomotive engineer, and he was a conductor, uh, with Union Pacific here in town, and, um, uh, but, uh, they just, uh, they're working right now with Nelson Wolf to finish up the project, because when I was talking to Buck Russell, he and I were working at, uh, the Salvation Army Friday, because we do the volunteer work to pass out the food at the Salvation Da- Army down there at Freo City Road, and, uh, he was telling me, he said, they're looking at either, he said, either two or three years of of completely shutting it down completely, that's it, they're done, they're out.
You know, shut the Curville branch down.
They're gonna shut down the Curville Ranch, and Wolf wants to come in there and light rail, you know, that area in there, which I think would be great, but they sold everything out to Kent Stanley, and I said, that's where your prime.
Exactly.
Uh, you know, areas are back there, cause when I was running out there, I wanted to see how far that track would go back, but it doesn't.
Yeah, it don't go very far.
No, it doesn't go back.
I remember whenever that track used to go all the way to Bernie.
Where it used to go all the way to Bernie?
When I was a kid, I used to catch the train with my bicycle, take it out to Bernie, I'd ride it around to Bernie Lake and go fish, and then catch the train back.
What a shame, times have changed, and they keep selling, well, it's just like this place, when I, when I sat on council, oh-four, I guess it was, and, uh, learned how much land Hollywood Park had given away to the city of San Antonio, I was like in shock.
You gotta be kidding me, I didn't know that.
Like, we used to, we used to own property on the other side of sixteen oh four in the Stone Oak area, but because we had a volunteer fire department, we couldn't really service the needs of everything, we owned everything, all the way down to, uh, uh, two eighty-one, from sixteen oh four to two eighty-one and back around, we owned all that, we owned all of that.
Wow.
Yeah, all gone, and and over a period of time, the mayors, you know, that came in, one behind the other, just ended up giving it all up, and now, you know, we're what what we're, uh, uh, locked with, what, thirty-two hundred homes, I think it is, thirty-four hundred homes?
No, 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 thirty-two hundred people, like twelve hundred homes.
Yeah.
Like twelve hundred houses.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's not.
Oh, I had my figures backwards, yeah, oh, okay, and I was like, this is.
What schools do, do, do the kids go to?
Churchill's the high school, most of the kids, I think some just go to Reagan.
Uh, some go to Reagan, some go to Eisenhower Junior High, and the Harmony, uh, is it Harmony? What's the, what's the elementary?
I can't.
I know my.
Yeah, Harmony Hills.
Yeah, my ki- my kids went over here across the street to, uh, uh, Brady.
Yeah.
Uh, Brady, at the time.
I know a lot of the kids go to Churchill, but I think some of them go to Reagan for the high school.
Yeah.
Um, is it Harmony Hills?
It's it, it's over there, cause it's right down there, because, uh, Hill Country Village, uh, services the police department. I'm talking to one of the, um, one of the guys that I know, uh, Ginger and Brett Rowe, who live in in Hill Country Village, and I'm trying to kinda schmooze Brett a little bit, cause he sits on city council over there, and I'm like, Brett, what's the story with the fire department, you know, how much longer are you guys gonna continue to keep taking the city of San Antonio's rate increases before you take a look at an option? He says, well, no, we're, we're looking at a few things, and I said, yeah, you know, there's always Hollywood Park, you know, we're.
I think there's some bad blood there someplace.
Well, there was some bad blood, because all the yahoos that I was working with, you know, volunteering with back then, ruined it all, you know, but if we can get past that.
I wasn't around that, so I don't know nothing.
No, you weren't, we could, we could get on, we, I I think we could do some, some good, but, yeah, you know, there's new blood, new blood here, and hopefully, there's new blood over there.
But it turns two years, is that how?
Two years, yeah, we've got some more, I think.
Two slots coming up.
Two slots coming up.
Stop bidding, please, someone other.
Hey.
I kick you out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I told you, you should take a shower.
Are you done?
I'm done.
You going home? Well, we got questions for you, bro.
Well, you got somewhere to go drink, you know?
Got a wife and kids there.
Was that to, uh, was that to settle the the, uh, questions that they had about the apartment complex?
Yes.
Well, I asked you pretty much everything that I needed to know, you know, my only concern was, what was the place that had this, the horrible fire that at the time? The what?
Wedgewood over Castle Hills.
No, 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 on Bitters.
Bitters and Blanco, isn't it?
Oh, Artisan's Alley.
Uh, Artisan's Alley.
Oh yeah.
Artisan's Alley, remember that thing went up boom, it was like a forty.
That's the one that got me hired on full time, remember our firemen started that? He got arrested, fired, and I got the job.
Oh, you're kidding.
Absolutely, no, I'm serious.
What?
Yeah. He pulled out, uh, he was with somebody else, they were in pickup truck, they lit it on fire, pulled out of Artisan's Alley. There was a Bear County Sheriff Deputy driving down Bitters and when Steve was the fireman. When he pulled out, his door was open and a bunch of stuff, cause he had a passenger with him. When he jumped in the car, he didn't have a truck, they were driving off as he was jumping in, and as he made the turn on the Bitters, a bunch of stuff went flying out of his truck. Something which identified him, but when they did that, the deputy tried pulling him over and got him out, I think it was a stop and go or something. Right here on the corner of Bitters and two eighty-one.
Right.
And at that time, I was still living with my parents and we were living off of Bitters Road near Blossom Athletic Center. So I saw a deputy there had someone pulled over, but wasn't paying attention to who it was, cause I was on my way up here to get on the truck. You know, we didn't have anybody stationed at that time, it's all volunteers, right? So, uh, I went, well, it wasn't all volunteers, but there was, not at night, there weren't any, they were all paid during the day. So, anyway, came up here, went there, and then found out that that was him pulled over there and he started the fire. So, yeah.
Why, what was the motive?
I, I don't know, he admitted, he admitted to a lot of other fires, county grass fires, that same night, he lit a fence on fire.
Pyromania.
Put hollow, yeah, he was just, he was an arsonist and he was working as fireman, I guess he wanted calls and, I don't know.
He was bored and he wanted a little more money.
And then we gotta start with you.
Absolutely.
And he's close to his way out.
But, anyway, what was your point on that part?
Uh, you know, I think, I, I think my only uh, uh, points were is that um, we've got, uh, we were talking about that you only had four. Four on duty that could only, that could come in one truck, you'd have to call the other guys in for the other truck.
Right.
So we're talking some time there, what type of time are we talking, thirty minutes?
No, um, Chavano Park would probably be here in about between ten and fifteen minutes.
So Chav- Chav- Chavano would be, would follow you.
We, so we're simultaneously dispatched with Chavano Park, Castle Hills, and Bearable Verde.
What, what, back up, what do you mean simultaneously?
It's called an automatic aid, so you have automatic aid and mutual aid, automatic aid, all our teams go off at the same time. So anytime you have a fire alarm or a structural fire, they're gonna dispatch all four departments at the same time.
Oh.
If it's uh, if it's something, anything else and we just need help, we can call for any department in the county to come help us with anything. Um, if we were at, if we were at Bearable Verde and we had a structural fire here, let's say we were out there assisting them, I only got two guys here. Well, you know, Chavano Park might send a couple of guys, cause their guys are probably gonna be in Bearable Verde too, but we can call Leon Valley, Windcrest. We can call anybody, Terrill Hills, and they'll come and help us, and that's all mutual aid. But automatic aid, we have four departments now that all get dispatched, Hollywood Park, Chavano Park, Bearable Verde, and Castle Hills, all simultaneously. So we're gonna roll, if it's a fire alarm, ninety-five percent of the time, they just have a standby, we don't even roll out of the station. Cause it's either someplace that always has fire alarms or, or, you know, it's during the day and they're like, hey, you know, we got it. Fire alarms most of the time don't amount to much at all. But if it comes in to where, you know, caller states there's smoke in her bedroom and she can't see where the fire or something like that. If it's obvious that there's something going on, we don't cancel and everyone's just on the way. So Castle Hills, depending on time of day, probably be anywhere between fifteen, twenty minutes out. Chavano Park, probably ten to fifteen, Bearable Verde, another fifteen to twenty minutes. So they're gonna come from up on uh, Bearable Verde and Evans, or TPC Parkway, really, they're on the corner up there.
Oh.
Right next to Johnson High School.
Okay, yeah.
They're gonna come from there, they do have a station out on Boardfield, um, if it's gonna be a while or we really need a lot of manpower, they may send somebody from there too. And Chavano Park is right off of Military inside sixteen oh four.
Right.
And Castle Hill Station is four ten and Military Highway.
Right, so now the Bearable Verde um, station, they'll come, they'll come straight down two eighty-one, Castle Hills.
It depends, they may come down Bearable Verde Road and just take sixteen oh four, depend, I mean, two eighty-one's a mess right now, two eighty-one's a mess.
Now, that was another reason why I was like, you know, during the mornings and, and the morning's coming this way, it's all timed, during the evening, it's all timed going out.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
Yeah, it depends on time of day, and you'll see that with like the cading ambulance, they may be here, like today, they rolled up on a call, we had a call, they rolled up right behind me and they followed me into the parking lot. But that was mid-afternoon, you know, but uh, you know, if it's five o'clock, it may take them ten, fifteen minutes to get here, you know, I mean, traffic. Just cause you have license sirens doesn't mean people get out of your way, so, uh, time of day is everything, but if it's turn rush hour traffic, yeah, there's gonna be delayed responses.
What is your decision-making process on the assessment, should the apartment complex catch fire as to what uh, truck you'll send?
More than likely will roll out with the ladder truck, just because they're two and three-story buildings. And we only have enough uh, staff to man one vehicle, so if we take the engine and we need the ladder truck and don't have it.
That's true.
We're, yeah, we don't have anybody to take the ladder truck down there for us, we're gonna have to wait for someone else to bring a ladder truck.
Is there a tank capacity in the ladder truck?
Yeah.
What, how, what size?
It's four hundred gallons.
So it's four hundred, and in the, in the motor, it's five?
It's thousand.
It's a thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, is that the one that we still have with the chemical treatment?
The foam, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have foam on the ladder truck, well, we have foam, but it's, it's not the compressed air foam system. So it's not somewhere you just turn a dial and you're mixing foam, you have to uh, induct it into the water. So you're gonna, we've got pails of foam, five gallons, that we put an inductor in and we have a special nozzle. To where when the water flows through, the hydraulics pull the foam into the line and mixes it in the foam nozzle. And then you're squirting foam, so we do have foam on that truck, it's just not as fast of an operation as a cap system.
Okay. Okay, um, the last time we were, we had a, a, I think I came to the office, we were talking about the life span of the motor? Is that the one, or was it the, or was it the ladder truck, which one was it, the one that you were working on?
To get a new one?
Yeah.
The ladder truck.
It was the ladder truck?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a two thousand one.
Okay, did we seen any progress on that?
No.
I always like to stay informed, yeah, I mean, so you know, I.
Chad, you came in, cause I don't have.
He only talks to me once a year, so.
Yeah, but now I'm retired, buddy, I'm all over you two guys, man, and he knows it because I'm a code compliance guy, like there is no tomorrow. I'll bring his phone off the wall.
We've got, we've got a sensor, he doesn't know over by the house, when he comes out and turns left, all my trucks.
Everybody gets in their car and leaves. That's like, Chief the other day, he goes, you again, you're gonna ask another question, Mr. Moore? I said, come on, man, I'm not here to ask. Uh, um, are they okay with it or?
Um, I guess you'll, you'll have a chance to ask them when they come out.
Okay.
Keep talking about it.
They're gonna have a citizen's participation, I don't wanna give everything away.
Well, that's what we're here for.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm about to leave.
Yeah.
One hour.
I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much, I can't think of any more questions that.
Well, you're taking this on your phone.
I'm almost certain they're gonna, they're not talking about that anymore.
They're gonna talk about billboards.
Yeah, um, I'm almost certain that there's gonna be enough support for them to pursue it. I mean, I, I, it's not gonna be a done deal until the parties agree on something, but I think they're gonna continue to pursue it.
Okay, well, that's good, I'd like to see the income, God, we're always looking for that.
We're gonna, we'll work on another project for income too.
Good, I'm all for it, sign me up, I'll be the guy running up and down the street with the American flag, with the Hollywood Park flag. We need one.
You're not gonna be in running shorts, are you?
Not, not for a while. I always catch so much flack.
You give it a lot, so.
Must be the ex-local chairman, isn't he, huh?
That's it.
I'm pretty sure there's gonna be a council place open up soon, I mean, every year one opens up.
I think there's two coming.
Well, I'm already here, I like it.
Who did we do last time?
You wouldn't ask questions, man, there's your platform right there.
The mayor was last time, right, he was in, so that would've been two, four and mayor, so one, three and five will be it.
Yeah, cause Delain took Chris's place when Chris went to the mayor.
What happened to Truman, she was like a lifer up there.
Oh, she's just, she's just, couldn't make it today.
Oh, so Oscar's where?
Yeah, that should be over there, but I think he gave him more elbow room.
Give him a little more room.
See, place two is missing, she's placed two.
Oh, oh, that's right, there's three over here and two on this side.
Other way around.
Oh, okay.
Let's go place two?
There is, but she's not here. Yeah, she, I don't know what she's doing, but none of my business.
Yeah, you're good to go, man.
All right, well.
I, I, I can't, I, I mean, I'll film in that I've talked to you and I've asked every question that I could possibly question you and ask you about, so I'm all in, you know?
Well, it's on the agenda, um, so I don't know if I'm gonna stick around, got hired pretty much early enough.
The mayor came in at four thirty and said, can you come to the meeting? They'd already told me no.
For the billboards or?
Yeah, I guess, just in case someone needs, has some questions.
Did you see, do they have, yeah, it's up there, the picture of where they wanna put that one at sixteen oh four in Boyd?
Yeah.
How many, you gonna piss on the?
Talk to him, he used to go there.
Yeah, I'm a billboard guy. Where are you been, we, we've been all over this, we've covered your job and we discovered his job while you guys were in there, and we got it all set.
We've got it all figured out.
I don't even have to come to work tomorrow then, great.
Because that was, that was one of the things that we were talking about, is the width and what, what it all, you know, my, my only wish was is that they do the work at night. Because of the traffic situation.
You don't even live over there, what do you care?
We gotta go through there.
Wow, you're a meanie. You know, like I was telling them, I've gotta go to rehab on my knee over there and drive down Stone Oak and then take a ride on Santer- Santeran, I can't even do that. No, I don't, I, I, now I, I go down two eighty-one.
I stick a, wait, go down two eighty-one and come down Santeran.
Yeah, it's, it's a zoo, you know, within block.
I think they're doing all that construction over there, um, Hagy's Church?
Yes, yeah. You know, I played golf with that guy one time, I know what he was.
Yeah.
Didn't even know who he was, I was at Frankenridge Golf Course and I was by myself and they had a foursome. And the starter said, would you like to play with these guys? I said, yeah, sure, why not? Best golf game I have ever had in my life.
Yeah.
I've never played a better game and haven't ever played a better game since.
Did you win?
No. Because, because I kept looking over my shoulder from that lightning bolt. But the nicest bunch of guys.
Hagy's had a little more clout, that's why he wore it.
Oh, he did, he did, very interesting conversations with those guys, really nice. Then when I, I just happened to, I think by the third hole, you know, I'm just not conscious of, of everything about me. Then I looked at his shirt, when it had the church name and everything and his name on it. No wonder that first tee shot was real good. Man, when'd you guys play again? That was very, 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 very interesting.
Were you a runner at one time?
Uh, I can't run anymore, but yes, I've been, I've been Forrest Gump all my life, yes, you know, I've been running since I was five, six years old. Snow skiing, water skiing and everything, and then finally just.
I was a runner too, at one time, in San Francisco, when I lived in San Francisco.
Well, I guess I'll hang out, but.
It's funny, how long ago did you get? Three weeks ago. Okay. And I, I just, I'm, I just can't stand it, so I'm totally adjusted with the therapy.
I was going to, he stopped me.
I just can't stand having a normal way, I can't stop walking.
Thank you, can the record show that our executive session ended at six thirty-five? And we're going to now go into our new business section of our council meeting. And we have any citizens that would like to speak? Please, announce your name and address and you have two minutes to share your.
Which topic are we starting off with?
Well, uh, come and tell us what you'd like to speak on, you have two minutes to share your thoughts.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll, I'll make this short, sweet, quick and to the point.
All right.
Um, I know John, I've talked to him on several occasions, um, when I got the uh, notice uh, of tonight's meeting and everything, I called him. Asked him quite a few questions about this apart- apartment complex, um, the uh, uh, people that are involved assisting us. Castle Hills, uh, Bearable Verde, um, uh, Chavano Park and everything, we had about a forty-five minute conversation. Um, and I was asking him some more questions here as far as the people that he has on duty. And to which vehicles he's gonna dispatch first in order to suit the needs of the people at the apartment complex, and I'm okay with that. He, he said it was the ladder truck. Um, uh, I was surprised, I wasn't aware that we had um, uh, this type of property a- around here. But after speaking to him for forty-five minutes and another fifteen or so here, um, I, I, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think that anybody uh, here in Hollywood Park would mind e- either. Uh, I think it's a great idea, I think the financial um, amount uh, that could come towards us uh, would be uh, very forthcoming. I, I think it's a really good idea. Uh, you want me to sit back down and then start again with the other two minutes or the other?
If you'd like, uh.
Yes.
Or this young lady here I've been talking to, I've here, I've had a lot of conversations with this gentleman here, also about the sign, uh, the expansion, uh, the.
Go ahead and continue, we'll start the clock fresh.
Okay, all right, Bob Moore, two oh five Sunway, uh, right up the street here. Um, we went over his uh, uh, brief that he showed me here. This here, uh, in one particular spot, uh, was this one here, uh, was my concern. Uh, regarding uh, the size of the um, structure that was going to be there, that was gonna be put into media. And I didn't actually know that we had that, uh, that that was our property, uh, based on the units that we already have here. Uh, what type of effect it was gonna have on the traffic, uh, how wide it would be, if that would all have to be reconstructed, what time he was gonna do it. I suggested, from my point of view, because of the traffic, which we're all aware of, that Voight handles both in the mornings and in the evenings. That he take, possibly take a look at doing the construction in the evening, uh, when everybody is not using it as, as much. He didn't, he doesn't have a problem with that at all, I, I think that was my main concern, uh, you know, for the businesses around there and also for the traffic in and out of Hollywood Park. Um, what else was here, I think, uh, didn't ask too much about Chulip Vista there because it didn't have a map on it. I, I wasn't given that there, but uh, uh, once again, we went over the added extra income to the city. Now, I'm, I'm on board with it and I know that uh, uh, when I sat on council here, I guess it was oh four, something, something to that effect. You know, we were in a constant argument over these signs, well, I feel if we don't do it, somebody else. Well, I feel if we don't do it, somebody else will, we're gonna lose some money. And that's all we've ever been trying to do is get some money for this city so we can get some things done.
Yeah.
Uh, because of our limited a- amount, uh, that we have, so, uh, y'all have my vote, my blessing, and two oh five Sunway is all on board. And, um.
Good timing.
Y'all make up the, the decisions, uh, but, uh, I wish there was a lot more people that aren't here that would, I, I could tell. But, um, I do have, uh, access to, um, a lot of people in my area, uh, over there. As a matter of fact, I've got a meeting with the chief of police tomorrow at ten thirty in the morning about break-ins. And, um, but, uh, I do talk to a lot of people on my street, uh, a- a- about these things, and I'm going to at least, uh, keep them aware of what's going on, so, thank you.
Hey, I appreciate your input and your involvement, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone? All right. Uh, Beau, would you like to introduce yourself and speak?
You don't have to tell your address unless. Hi, how's everyone, um, Beau Burkett, uh, I'm in Burkett Media, so I'm the one presenting the billboard opportunities, and I really just wanna make myself available today to answer any questions you have. I know it's, uh, two different locations, uh, two different revenue streams and what it totals up to, and if you have any questions about the finances or location or, you know, uh, just kind of logistics or anything like that, I'd, I'd love to answer questions, um, that y'all, if y'all have any.
Guys? I guess the only question, the only question I have is, uh, you're incurring the cost for all the construction?
Yes, sir, yes, yes, yeah, so what, what will happen is, uh, Chula Vista is the one there on two eighty-one, it'd be the southernmost sign in the city. So it's, um, you've got Oak Creek and then just south of that, about, about seven hundred and thirty-seven feet is Chula Vista, there's a feline veterinarian clinic right there and, yeah. Right by the, just by the Starbucks there, yeah, so it would be, um, similar to the billboards in town there at Oak Creek and Sterling Browning. There would be a, a median that'd be created, those streets have the same right-of-way width that, uh, Chula Vista has, so it'd be a very similar situation. I was discussing with them while you guys were in session that we will be pushing that median, um, back, I guess that would be to the west, uh, further away from the road, uh, to where it'll be back behind the two driveways to the businesses that you enter into once you turn onto Chula Vista. Cause, um, you know, that's important that nobody's having to, you know, go around the median, so it'll be very, very similar to what is already constructed in town, uh, same, um, aesthetic. And as far as bearing the cost, we'd be handling all the costs for all that. And then, um, luckily, the one at Voight on sixteen oh four, the median is in place, uh, that is currently a five-foot wide median. Uh, the pole is a fifty-four inch pole, which is, uh, you know, just inside of the, of the five feet. And then also, uh, construction we were discussing, you know, can be done at night, you know, we can work around that, work with the city as, to be as, uh, least intrusive as we can. You know, it's a, it's a pretty quick process, so once we start construction, we usually get in and out within forty-eight, seventy-two hours.
I think Sunday morning when cornerstone, cornerstone. It's kind of a.
And really, you know, the, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can you extend the median there? To cut that, to cut that first drive off into the Valero, that is always a cluster there.
You know, we, it's, no, and that's something I was gonna, you know, obviously if we get to a point where there's something that both parties wanna move forward on, then we can do whatever we are allowed to do, whatever you guys want us to do with that median. If it hasn't been, you know, it looks like that's the original median that could use a facelift, you know, so if we're gonna go in and do something to it, we can make it aesthetically consistent with the other ones in town. And if we need to reshape it or reform it, you know, cause we're gonna have to go in and, you know, drill a hole, you know.
It's really not a ninety-degree left.
Exactly, yeah.
You gotta go further and then come back.
Sure, yeah.
And it clogs up people right there all the time.
Yeah, and we, since we're gonna be, we're gonna be in there anyway redoing it, it's just like after you put in a pole, you've gotta redo the landscaping or your ass, so we can, we can reshape it however you guys, uh, want. You know, whatever's advantageous for you guys and.
Are you talking about extending the median, Oscar?
Extended.
So people don't turn in that first driveway?
They would have to use the second, the second entrance.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't think that was intended with the, the traffic, that was intended to handle.
That wouldn't be a problem at all, you know, cause we're all ready to be in there reforming and reshaping anyways, so that, we could definitely do that, just, you just guys just let us, wait, no.
In Blazing Saddles, they did a toll gate in the desert, I believe. And then Slim Pickens had to go back and get dimes, I think. That was the financial impact.
You know, one thing I, I put in the memo here, I know it's a lot of pages, but, you know, one thing I just wanted to come down and say in person is that, you know, I'm a small family, family-owned business, and that's something that we take a lot of pride in, in working with small businesses, and the current billboard company owns every billboard in town, you know, it's something that we think would be great for not only us in the community, but local businesses. So lower ad rates and something that we were discussing earlier is that their current model is you have to rent multiple billboards in their network, and it becomes really cost prohibitive for small businesses. And one thing we do with our digital billboards throughout the state is we, not only do we make you, we don't make you rent multiple ones, you can rent just one, but we also don't put restrictions on the amount of time, and we'll even do smaller packages where you show up maybe every two minutes opposed to every minute to where it really gets the cost down. So we custom tailor packages to where it'll fit a smaller business's budget, you know, and then also, uh, we put in here too that we would be promoting, you know, uh, town, Hollywood Park's, uh, events and, you know, y- you know, promotions and then everything, you know, safety, uh, community awareness, all that, and then that's something that we would be providing, not only the space, but we have the graphic artists who can do all that, so you guys wouldn't have to be burdened with any of the artwork design or anything, you know, that's what we do in some of the other communities around.
What about local and nationwide, uh, political science signage that goes up there?
You know, we, we haven't had, you know, we've, on all of our digital billboards, we've had, this year we had, uh, some local, you know, uh, county commissioners who were running things like that, and they would rent billboards typically a two-week run-up just to the event, you know, and that happened in, uh, we did a little bit out in, in Colleen and Temple, uh, Bell County up there, but we really don't do much, a lot of our clients are typically doing annual contracts, you know, you know, home builders, restaurants, uh, cartilators, people like that. Um, we never, just in all of our ad contracts, we don't do anything that is profane or lewd or anything like that, that's just something.
Offensive.
Absolutely, and we put, anything you guys would be comfortable with in an agreement, but that's just how, you know, we don't feel comfortable in that, we get calls all the time from those kind of businesses and just, you know, don't personally believe in doing that. But, um.
Any questions, Mr. Brennan, Janice or Mr. Brennan, any questions, or Jeff, Johnny?
He, he referred to a contract, he already submitted a contract, or is that somewhere gonna work at?
No.
No, it was just a proposal on the financial terms here, yeah, so basically, these two, two locations, you know, sixteen oh four Voight and then two eighty-one in Chula Vista, uh, would come out to ju- just a hair over four million dollars over thirty years. And that is very consistent with what you guys have in town already, and again, we would bear all the costs, especially in, in addition to reshaping medians, extending them, things like that. And then, um, hit, Bobby had asked earlier, you know, kind of what timeline it'd be like, we can move quickly, once the agreement's in place, you know, usually takes about sixty days to get all the, you know, materials and, uh, the digital screens ordered and things like that. But, you know, we'd wanna, you know, break ground and get it going, um, you know, as soon as, as, as possible, but we'd wanna work, you know, closely with you guys and do whatever we can to be, uh, out of everyone's way.
And I appreciate you taking the time to come down and, and.
Sure.
And present the opportunity to us.
Yeah.
Shoot.
I've got a lot of questions, who regulates?
You guys, or, or is, is there regulations?
Yeah, you know, it's a good question, because typically, Tech Stop handles all billboards that are within six hundred and sixty feet of a Tech Stop maintained road. So in most situations, Tech Stop would be the permitting authority here on top of the city. But, um, you guys are certified city, so you don't, you don't have to have Tech Stop permitting as long as you handle everything on your own. So, uh, Hollywood Park, Hill Country Village, Castle Hills, there are a few, uh, towns here in, in San Antonio that are certified, meaning basically you don't have to have Tech Stop permits. And what that does is that allows for, uh, smaller spacing, Tech Stop spacing is, is longer, and they also have different height restrictions. So this proposal is really only doable, um, uh, due to the fact that you're a certified city.
Another question, later on, we're thinking about maybe cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Can we use that sign for cameras at any, any point later on, four, five years from now?
I mean, you're, yeah, I mean, you guys are more than welcome, we've had some of our signs where landowners wanna have a, you know, security light put on the pole and pointing down, I mean, if you guys ever wanted to utilize it, just like traffic cameras or something like that, I mean, we would, I mean, we have the, the pole there, it's in place, and we'd be more than happy to let you guys use it. Especially if it's assisting, you know, safety and the community, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Appreciate it.
And Mr. Veri, just to let you know, we, yes, we are a certified city, so that being said, you're correct, but I have to submit a report every year, I just finished submitting it last month, letting them know where all our signs are and in what shape and so forth, and the inspector and I have to do that every single year.
That's a big deal and, and, uh, good job that they've done that, and the, the staff has done that.
I'm, I'm relieved, and do we have to file and include any new signs before they can go up, or just in, every year, it's part of the annual?
End of reporting, so we won't meet until, uh, Nick, uh, December of two thousand nineteen, we'll have to report again.
Okay, all right.
Touching on the questions that I was asking you about, uh, keep the team that you have here.
Yeah, I'd love to, yeah, that's a great question if I have time to say that, um, I don't know if I do, but, uh, basically he was saying if there's any kind of malfunction, am I notified, what happens from a diagnostic? And the, really, these, the digital billboards are gonna be built like a V, so they're angled away from the neighborhoods behind, they're gonna be angled toward the road, and that really prevents any, like, trespassing pollution from that standpoint. But also, if there's any kind of malfunction, power outage, we get an immediate, um, email, and then a, a crew gets dispatched. We'll have three different electrician teams that are certified to work on these type of digital units, and then somebody gets dispatched immediately to go work on it. So that on top of the fact that there's a fifteen-foot webcam sticking off and you can watch it live at all times and run diagnostic reports, so.
P O P stuff.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right. Again, I thank you, if there aren't any other questions, I think we can adjourn this, this, uh, public session and meeting tonight at six, I think it's six fifty-two. Hey, thank you, Beau.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Uh, yes, sir, on Tuesday.